So, we have to work with the government to get the money. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds. And then we need to work with the government to get the funds. So, we need to work with the government to get the funds.
All right, we will now call to order the City of Aiken Planning Commission meeting for August fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. For some of you who may not have joined us at a previous meeting, let me share a few things. First thing I'd like to ask is that everyone check your cell phones to be sure they're on mute or off. When we call for an application consideration, we will first ask if anyone wants to speak on behalf of the application. Then we will ask for those who wish to speak in opposition to the application, and then anyone else who wants to make any follow-up comment. Now, when you are called on to speak, if you would step up to the podium and please state your name and address for the record. Address the commission, and after you have finished making your comments, if you would just pause for a moment to be sure there are no questions from the commissioners. And just to be real clear about the decisions that we make today, they are recommendations to council on how, you know, we feel the matter should be resolved. And so, once we're done, it will go to council, and if you would like, you may also join the council meetings and voice your opinion there as well. All right, our first item is Application seventeen dash two.
Max.
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. It is the, um, thank you. The approval of minutes, see, I'm so eager to get right down to it. Is approval of the minutes of the June thirteenth work session and regular meeting. Anyone have any changes, additions, or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the June thirteenth session.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, then our first order of regular business is Application seventeen dash two zero 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 six. It's a request for annexation at Trolley Line Road by Caitlin Shearer. All right, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Right, not hearing any, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this application? Not hearing any, it's back to the commission for a motion.
Madam Chair, in regards to Application number seventeen two zero 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 six, tax parcel number zero eight seven dash twelve dash zero nine zero zero one, that we send this to council for approval.
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Okay, then Application eighteen dash two zero 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 one, it's another request for annexation adjacent to Hounds Lake Subdivision, Chris and Carol Vereen's. Anyone here to speak on behalf of that application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to that application? Not hearing any, it's back to the commission for a motion.
Madam Chairman, in reference to Application eighteen dash two zero 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 one, an annexation request for tax parcel one zero six dash ten dash zero eight dash zero zero five, I make a motion that we recommend this favorably to City Council.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, all right. It's also a request for annexation, Application eighteen dash two zero 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 two, property on Kasaba Drive, Francisco and Jody Poole, Terrell. Terrell, is anyone present who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Right, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, not hearing any, it's back to the commission, we're on quite a roll here.
Madam Chairman, with respect to Application number eighteen dash two zero 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 two, annexation request for tax parcel number zero eight nine dash one one dash one zero dash zero zero one, I recommend that we approve and send this to City Council for their consideration.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Application D, which is eighteen dash two zero 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 three, is a request for annexation, two-two-oh-five Whiskey Road by Bill Mosley, Mosley Real Estate Advisors, Inc. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on behalf of this, or should we do it all?
I was just saying, Madam Chair, I was just gonna recognize, other than the applicant we have here tonight, the applicant's traffic engineer, we have Clark McCann, attorney representing S C D O T, John Poole, city engineer, all available to you this evening as part of the process. So additionally, staff has provided a follow-up memo clarifying some of the conditions of approval associated with this application. It just provides some, some trigger points as to which, as to when some of the items would occur on the recommended conditions of approval. So again, just to provide clarity in the process.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question about this? Are these conditions a little bit different than the ones that were?
They're essentially the same conditions, just, just clarified in, in when they would occur.
Right, it's just that in number one, you left out the part about pay into a fund, is that deliberate?
Correct, so it would, that was just separate out into two separate conditions in that case. Now have proposed condition one on, in the packet, was split out into proposed conditions one and two in the memo.
Oh, right, okay.
So it's included in there still, it's just better, sorry, better organization for for staff to track.
Gotcha. Okay, great, all right, thank you for that update, we appreciate that we have all the expertise we need present. Is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application, and this is for the annexation? Okay, and when will you take two separate votes, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we will go ahead and vote on the annexation request, it's back to commission for a motion.
Madam Chairman, in reference to Application eighteen dash two zero 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 three, the annexation request on tax parcel one twenty-two dash seventeen dash zero four dash zero zero three, I would recommend that we recommend this to City Council, it is consistent with our plan that we have worked so hard on, and I would recommend it to council for approval.
Second. We have a second, any discussion?
Well, I assume you're gonna recommend that the number one under the conditions be amended to that motion, right? Transfer be completed and recorded within one hundred and eighty days.
Within one hundred and eighty days. I would, I would add that to my motion as well, that the conditions under, that would be under the memorandum we have just received under the possible conditions, the first one, approval, the annexation could be conditioned on the following, that the transfer of property between the applicant and the seller be completed and recorded at the Aiken County R M C office within one hundred and eighty days. Thank you.
All right, is there a second now for it as amended? A second, all right, any discussion?
Mr. Blain, just for the record, could you just state for the people in attendance the difference between these two votes?
So, yeah, so we have two different votes, one is for simply the annexation of the property, and that, that is a deal to be able to receive city services at that location. A separate vote, sorry, along with that comes the rezoning to a planned district. Therefore, you have a second item, which is a concept plan, which is essentially a, a basic site plan that goes along with a planned district. So that would essentially become the zoning for the property, the, the plan becomes a zoning in a planned district. So as a planned commercial district, that would be the second of the two items.
Thank you, I just wanted that clear for the people in attendance, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Then I'll call for the vote, all in favor? All right. Okay, and our final item is Application eighteen dash two-three-zero-zero, zero, zero-one, concept plan approval request, again, the applicant, Bill Mosley, Mosley Real Estate Advisors. Is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Okay, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? This is our last item, what are y'all here for?
Well, what's the difference between the request for annexation and the request for concept plan approval? It seems like they're almost the same item, but I'm kinda interested, so I don't know.
Okay, and based on the clarification, the annexation just means that this, that the parcel of property has been requested to be annexed into the city limits. That's just that the property now becomes part of the city. The second one is what we do with that property. The concept plan.
Was already outside of the city limits somehow? I mean, I know we got kind of a weird map with the donuts and all, but.
It's not in the city now.
Not in the city.
Not in the city, and it won't be in the city yet until council approves this, but it is our recommendation that they do so. The second part of this is, is what goes on that property, there must be a concept plan to describe what goes on that property.
Madam Chair, could we ask this gentleman to just come forward to the podium and say who he is?
Yes.
Well, I'm actually pretty much done.
Okay. Does that clarify it for you?
Yes, actually it does.
Okay, thank you.
If the property is adjacent to the city, yeah, this map sorry shows it better, adjacent to the city limits, but outside the city.
All right, thank you.
And now, once the property, you know, if it gets annexed, we do require a concept plan for what is done with certain regulations that must be complied with. And that's what the second part of this is, is the request for the proposal for a Taco Bell. Yes, sir.
May I ask a question? I just really have a question.
Okay, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Phil Kishony, on nine-one-zero, Dougherty Road. I have no problem with the Taco Bell, but I'm just looking at the, at the in and out onto Dougherty Road. And it would be the entrance off of Dougherty Road into the site, and the exit off of the site onto Dougherty Road. And I presume that the double lane turning right is the proposed concept to be fulfilled somewhere down the road, because that's not the existing plan.
No, there are really two things in play here. There, there is a part of the, let's see if I can get this right, the Aiken County Land Management. And there is, there is a Whiskey Road, Dougherty Road project, which has already been approved and is, is ready, you know, to, to be bid. So that, that's already in the works.
Is that just for the, for the Whiskey Road?
For Dougherty Road.
Not the entire Dougherty Road?
No, no.
Just, just that intersection.
Whiskey Road intersection, okay, to facilitate the term. And then the Taco Bell's entrance will have to be aligned with this, and we're hoping construction can be done in a parallel way so that it's not torn up unnecessarily long. But that, whether or not there's anything there, the plans for fixing that intersection were already in play.
Mm-hmm, no, I think, I, I understand the fix of the intersection, but the, the exit off of the turning, going north, turning east is impossible. It's impossible from the prior property, and there's only one lane to traverse. When you improve Dougherty Road and increase the traffic flow, this is going to be an impossible exit. And to the extent that anyone visiting Taco Bell wants to go north on Whiskey Road, they are gonna try and traverse both of those right turn lanes to get into the left turn lane, and that is diabolical.
We discussed.
Beyond diabolical.
Well, we, we did discuss that, I, I do agree that it does seem like Mission Impossible, but.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't the, and I have absolutely no interest in the property behind it or around it, but why wouldn't the petitioner try to attach some of the adjoining property so that the people could exit out onto Murrah and have a variety of directions to go into and be part of the normal traffic, one lane to one lane, even on the modified plan yet to be constructed? This seems like you're asking for a great, not you, not you personally, Mrs. Stewart.
No, I understand. I don't take it personally.
But I think this concept plan is, is, is your sandwich. I think this concept plan is, is, is your sandwiching in a racetrack onto a pool table.
I will say, Madam Chair, that there was a traffic impact study done to analyze both of the proposed intersections, as well as the functionality of the Murrah Owens intersection and the Whiskey Dougherty intersection, both with existing conditions and as a redevelopment with, with the proposed Whiskey Dougherty improvements. And they were operating at, we've worked with SEDOT to ensure that they're operating at a acceptable level of service, according to SEDOT, who's, who is responsible for, for those access points on the right of way through their encroachment process.
What's acceptable, seventy-five percent capacity?
I would have to, we have the, the traffic engineer here that, that did the study. It's, it's not really measured in that way.
To go on further, what, the apartment complex that's being constructed off of Owens, is there going to be an exit off of that property through, somehow through that, out onto Dougherty Road? That's going to, in itself, and it probably should, to alleviate the exit to Whiskey Road, to put it on a softer landing field, that's going to add traffic. Has that been part of the traffic study?
That development was included as.
Is there, is there going to be some access to Dougherty from that apartment complex?
So not directly. It's onto Owens, and then it, it will utilize the Owens-Murrah intersection as part of this improvement project and as mitigation for this particular project that wasn't included in the original intersection improvement plan is a four-foot concrete median that goes back to the intersection of Owens and Murrah. So, so for this, for the proposed right in, right out from the site and the adjacent site, the shared access there, it would prevent left ends and left outs in that, in that area. That's what improves the safety there and for the SEDOT standards. But it would still allow that the Owens-Murrah intersection as a full intersection, it doesn't limit the Owens-Murrah turning. So that, so that apartment complex you're speaking of doesn't exit directly out onto Dougherty. It exits out onto Owens, which then utilizes the intersection adjacent to this site.
I thought there was a proposed exit out onto Dougherty, either at Nielsen or at Christie Place or somewhere, somewhere in between. That's not the case?
It was originally, but we did not approve that.
Correct, yeah. There's a, there's a primary access onto that, and there's, there is a secondary fire access that was made available, but not a primary access.
And so you feel this concept plan is, is workable, is doable, and not going to create a monster of a problem?
And that will not be the only entry point or exit point. There'll also be an exit on Whiskey Road.
But that's a right turn only.
Right. But it's not going to be, well, that can be either.
That would really be nuts. No, you couldn't possibly approve that, could you? Making a left turn off of this property onto Whiskey.
Right. And SEDOT has.
You're, you'd be exiting right into a, a left turn lane.
Correct. And oftentimes, it can make you back far enough that you, that's not a movement that'll be available in reality.
Isn't that a double yellow line? I don't, how can you enter a left turn lane, you know, on a?
Well, you can, if you're exiting onto, into a, into a lane, it's, you.
It's not a permitted access.
There's a suicide lane though in the middle. There's a median, a center median to that, which is allowed to go north or south in that middle one.
At this point of this property, this entire property traverses a left turn lane. There is no median there. It's all left turn lane, the entire property.
Bill, if I may, they allow left turns from Whiskey Road onto, into that left turn lane today, from that location. It's not prohibited.
No, I understand that. But that, that whole property is in, kind of in violation, isn't it?
Well, I mean, I mean, this, this new development actually brings it more into compliance with almost all of the city's regulations.
I understand. It just seems like this is kind of a left foot design for a great piece of property. I would just think it, it could be improved by acquiring more property. And I'm not speaking for the property owners, but it just, it just would work better. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
I don't think the property owner would mind telling you, they've tried to acquire some other pieces of property to go with this property. They were not successful.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to comment or respond to any comments made? Yes, sir. Now, if you'll tell us your name.
Yeah, I apologize for not doing that first time. I'm Joshua Duvall. I live actually down in New Ellington, but I pass by this pretty nearly every day. It took me a minute before I realized what, what it is that he's talking about, and actually, what y'all were talking about, is that you would be entering in from the middle lane, the suicide lane, but farther back. It'd be a bit like trying to enter and exit out of the Checkers, which is right next door to it. It's just, it would be a little closer to the actual intersection. Now, I do have one small concern about that is, can I, can I approach the map?
Yeah, sure.
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 Is up here, I mean, you have this sort of like funnel shape. And you have the same thing down here with Checkers. But there's this strange little triangular thing that's been raised up in the middle. It kind of creates, it's actually, it can be a little disorienting, because your first thought is, well, I should turn in right as it is. And then you realize, no, there's two lanes there, one in, one out. And then you're thinking, maybe I should drive around that little raised triangle. I mean, it can be done, but I've seen a lot of drivers just ignore it. And I'm not proud of this, but occasionally I have to, but only when there's low traffic. But when there's more traffic, I have to wait for the traffic to pass before I can get in there anyhow. And it's usually easier just to enter from the opposite side coming south. And I think it's probably going to be the same way here. So I, I don't know if that presents any additional impediments or not, so.
May I piggyback on some of these concerns? If I could just address some of my conceptions here of coming in and out, ingress and egress. If you're coming east on Dougherty Road and you're going to take a right in, you're going to slow traffic in that lane that's going to come and take a right on Whiskey Road. So as that car slows to turn into Taco Bell, it's going to slow the traffic behind it, which sort of defeats the purpose of having two right turn lanes. If you're coming out onto Dougherty, taking a right, there's probably going to be two or three, maybe more, cars queued up in Taco Bell to take that right. I can't see it being a onesie every time. And then you're going to slow traffic when you're coming out of there. If the cars are coming, you're going to slow traffic again for someone who wants to take a right on Whiskey Road. Otherwise, if you want to take a left to go north on Whiskey, you're going to have to go across those two lanes, which I don't see as tenable. Maybe you go to the middle lane, you get all the way to the end, and you realize, I have to take a right. I can't take a left in the second lane. Coming from Whiskey Road, taking a left into the property, you're going to have to get in that middle lane and come across oncoming traffic. And then right, taking a right out of, out of the Taco Bell to take a right onto Whiskey Road, you're going to slow up traffic that's just coming up to speed after having been at the stoplight. I don't see a tenable way to get in and out of this property without snarling traffic. I just don't see it.
Well, may I just say, here again, we have to keep this in perspective. We're talking Aiken. And I mean, if it takes you, yes, and I can see people not letting individuals in and not using good manners. But I can't see it slowing traffic significantly. It may slow at thirty seconds, or you might be at the light, you might miss that green light and have to sit through one more light. But I can't see it slowing traffic.
I can't see it not slowing traffic.
I can see it being me sitting in Taco Bell trying to get out and not being, being more upset that somebody's not letting me in to the right turn lane than the people in the right turn lane being upset that somebody's going to pull in front of them.
If this wasn't already so congested, I'd probably agree with you, Susan. I drive that way all the time. And granted, there's going to be the two right lanes that'll mitigate some of the traffic issues. But I still just, I still just don't really see an easy way in or out. One of the busiest intersections in town to put a fast food restaurant, I just don't see that.
Let me just say, we need to save this for our discussion to a motion. But we, is there any other point you want to make or any questions we have of him?
Actually, yeah. In fact, I just thought of a way that that could be alleviated. Right up on the main Aiken Augusta Highway, I'm trying to remember what it's called, where the Burger King is. I think it's, I'm not sure if it's still Robert and Bell or if it becomes Jefferson Davis at that point. I'm not really sure. There is a Burger King down there. It has its own exit lane that exists from the University Parkway intersection all the way down to, actually, all the way down to that route that goes off into Gregg Highway. It is its own little exit lane that you can just jump off of the main traffic from and go right into the Burger King, wherever that's in between those two spots. It would be a small sacrifice of parking space on that design, but that could do it.
But isn't that, I mean, in essence, that's what one of those two turn lanes can become? Because with this project, there will be two turn lanes starting further back. So, yeah, you're right. That would be a similar, a similar solution.
I mean, yeah, that, that could work that way, but, well, I don't know how much, how much you could really carve out of that layout there for this. But, but the way they do it up on Robert and Bell just seems more natural to the shape of the road, though. But I don't know. That, that's up there. That's not necessarily here.
Well, it's a wider road as well, more property to use. All right. Well, we thank you for your input. Any, any other comments? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this application? All right. Not hearing any. It's back to the commission for a motion. Madam Chair, with respect to application number eighteen dash two three zero zero one, the concept plan approval request for tax parcel number one two two dash one seven dash zero four dash zero zero three, I make a motion that we recommend this to city council with the proposed conditions I set forth on the memorandum dated fifteenth August, two thousand and seventeen. All right. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I just would like to make a note. Mr. Coshoney had stated that that was a left-hand turn. I'm looking at the GIS map, and it is, for about eighty percent of the furniture to Whiskey Road, it is a left-hand turn. But there is about a twenty percent where, and based on our drawings, about where the Whiskey Road exit or egress would be is in fact a, I hate, I don't know what's the right term, suicide lane or whatever. But there is a open median between there.
Universal turn lane.
A universal turn lane there, for about twenty percent of that, which would be close to where that egress or actually entrance would be. I just wanted to make a note, because I apologize, I was thinking that was suicide lane all the way down, and it's not. It's about eighty percent a left-hand turn lane going to Dougherty, but about twenty percent of it is suicide lane.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairman, just one more point. I'm not so sure that the nature of the business is irrelevant here, because when do people get food, at lunch and at rush hour? So you're talking about probably the highest volume of traffic, well, you have the highest volume of visits at this business. And I, I just don't see that as being irrelevant. I see that as being a big problem.
And I will clarify, the, the traffic study conducted for this, to look at all the alternatives and to mitigate the functionality issues, did take into account peak AM and PM traffic conditions at that site and differences between the existing development and a proposed development. So those, those were looked at when they were looking at level of service of both of, both of the proposed accesses and the intersections that would be impacted. So we looked at those with cities on call, traffic engineer and SEDOT's right-of-way encroachment permit technician that the city works with.
Did the traffic study say the number of visits per day?
It does.
Molly's looking that up, Kent. I was thinking, though, we had a potential sign submitted to us, and it said breakfast right on. It said Taco Bell breakfast. So I'm thinking, well, where's the largest, the majority of the traffic going for breakfast? It'd be, I would think, going south on Whiskey Road, the largest volume, and then coming back into town in the evening for dinner. Now, lunch is like all out, grab out, but coming back in, that large volume from the plant or wherever, coming back into Aiken would be able to hit that suicide lane and turn in from the suicide lane as traffic clears south, just as anyone else has to do right now, going into the backside of the other entrances to Publix or to the other parts of the mall, same thing.
Right. Was there, for people who are headed westbound on Dougherty, was there any concern about people trying to take that left, even though it's right in, right out? People get wild ideas, especially when they're hungry.
That's why they're, that's why the requirement for the four-foot concrete median, so that's not even a possibility, yeah.
Not doing structural damage to the bottom.
So that, that's, that's what increases that, that level of functionality there, that right in, right out, is to, by preventing the lefts in and the lefts out by using a solid barrier, a concrete median, it improves the safety of that.
Yep. And I knew that there'd be a physical barrier. I just thought about people who have to stop and look. Oh, can I get in there? And they slow down, and then.
Right. So it would be, it would be marked with, with the, the way those medians are marked, it would be in such a way that you wouldn't be able to ignore it, I don't believe it. It would be like yellow curve and things like that. And so the difference is that the existing use as a bowling alley is around three hundred and sixty trips daily. Again, you know, obviously, most of those PM, peak hour, you know. But with the, with the fast food, you have approximately nine hundred and forty, and those are more evenly split between the AM.
Thank you.
So the evening really isn't going to be any worse than it currently is.
Right. So, yeah, the, the, the major difference is the AM, AM traffic.
Any other discussion?
Just one last point, if I may. If someone could address, though, cars queuing up to come out of Taco Bell at each exit, because we really haven't discussed that. I mentioned it briefly, coming onto Dougherty Road. But sometimes, because again, I mentioned in our work session, my point of reference is Wendy's, because it's a little bit similar up at Pine Log and Whiskey Road. But if you look at the number of parking spaces and you have a drive-through, I can just still see two, three, four, five, six cars queuing up to get out, and that's a problem.
And so, yeah, that was studied, it, it, through the traffic modeling, it wasn't as much of a issue during AM. PM, there was some recognition of some internal queuing that would likely occur, particularly at the Whiskey Road access.
I think it's going to inconvenience the people in, that go to Taco Bell more than anybody else. So if you're not inconvenienced by going there, I mean, if it doesn't bother you to sit there and wait for the traffic, then.
I don't go to that Wendy's because I can't get in and out.
I don't eat at Wendy's anyway, so.
Well, to, I think Susan's point earlier was that the first six weeks after the donut place opened on Whiskey Road, there was a tremendous traffic problem. They had to have off-duty police officers out there. And I can only imagine the first six weeks, you'll have a big crowd, so. You know, I'm just looking at the average, that the Taco Bell on the north side does queue up a car like you're talking about, two or three deep, but I haven't seen it all the way out onto Richland Avenue either. So in hopes that once it, its newness wears off, that it wouldn't be that, as much of a burden.
I would, I would like to add, if we could add, just to comment along with our recommendation, that.
recommendation, that we, we really hope that this work on the road proceeds with alacrity, because if it doesn't, if that, if that roadwork gets bogged down, and you are going to have a mess then, because you're only going to have one lane, everybody's going to have to turn right in that lane, everybody's going to have to turn out of Taco Bell in that lane, so if that roadwork gets delayed or held up, people are, it is going to be very, very frustrating for people, but we hope.
We talked about the timing of it.
The timing is important.
Obviously, we want to do it as, as...
Is it unrealistic to add that as a, as a possible condition?
We can't put a time.
You're going to run into bidding issues and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we can't put a time limit on it.
There's things the city's got to do, but I mean, I, I know it's their intent, once, once everything is resolved, that the city fully intends to move forward quickly.
But that's not something we can stipulate. All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, we've had discussion. Is there anything else before I call for the vote?
I asked earlier about the utilities, and I don't know, I haven't seen that as a condition, nor did I see it in the plan. I know that we had someone give us an answer in the work session, but the utilities are right there on Whiskey Road right now, so I can see that only becoming more of a problem if they were left above ground. Is there a condition or a plan that would bring them underground or...
They're, they're, they're going to be required, and they've already got the plan in place, to do the utilities in conformance with all of our regulations. John, John Pools with our engineering department has worked very hard on that.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a requirement now. All right. Not hearing any other discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right. This will now go to city council. Those of you who have an approval waiting for city council consideration, you need to notify the city manager's office. If you contact them, they will let you know when it will be on the agenda for the city council meeting, and then you may attend that meeting as well and voice your thoughts. There being no further business before us, this meeting is now adjourned.